Should be the motion that the committee recommended.
Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the July 2 regular city council meeting to order. And I'd like to ask any of those who would like to join the council, myself, in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is audience comments. This is your time to come up and address the council. The guidelines for audience comments are on the meeting agenda, and those who have signed up to speak will be called up first. If you didn't sign up, I will still ask for other speakers before I close this part of the meeting. When recognized, please come up to the lectern and the microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and limit your comments to three minutes. If you've brought written comments, please come up and hand them to the clerk as well. And if you're here as part of a group or speaking on behalf of a group, please identify yourself as the spokesperson for the group. And those in the audience supporting the comments made tonight during audience comments can raise your hand to show the council that you are supporting what was said. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening, Tina?
There are none.
David Kapler, would you like to address the council?
I would need more than three minutes if I outlined the process we went through in Old Town on the traffic calming, but it's turned out nobody's here hardly to talk about it, so I think a lot of people are very happy. So it's taken a while, but it's there, and I think it's a good model for dealing with similar problems that occur in the city in the future or are occurring now and people are expecting resolution. So thank you to the staff and city and all. Good work.
Dave, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? Connie Marsh heading up.
So I'm Connie Marsh, and I live up on Squawk Mountain. And by definition, I hate it when you say three minutes because there's always more than three minutes worth to say. So I would rather have the standard be five, and then we could be brief and feel like we're being good people. I'm here for Old Town. It's taken years and years and years and years to get something changed in Old Town. And so I want to congratulate whoever thought to say, let's do something for temporary and see how it works and see what the community has to say. Awesome. The gentleman, one of whom is not here, did a pretty good job with the neighbors. Communication is super hard. And so if I was going to say anything, they had a great walkabout. And then after the walkabout in the neighborhood, it sort of fell off because it's hard to get notification out to the neighborhoods. It hasn't been going on next door. And so it would be good to practice a consistent system for this type of a thing. I like the speed bumps, the humps. The neighbors had said that that is what they wanted, that chicanes are going away. That's what they said they didn't want. I like the consistency between all the streets for the speed bumps. I don't like the alleys sort of being left up in the air. So what I would like to see is I would like to see a time certain for the alleys to be considered. And then to finish off the feedback loop, I would like to have a report back in six months notifying the neighbors to say, what do you think now? Now that they're in for good, is this the right thing? Can we refine it in some way, shape, or form? I don't know if there's any data that can be added on for that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Wow, it flashed orange-green.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council this evening? I'll ask the second time. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? And a final time, anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the June 27 board meeting for Cascade Water Alliance with Mayor Polly. We heard updates on several topics for Cascade Water Alliance. One is about reclaimed water. Cascade is engaging in ongoing discussions with King County and other water providers about reclaimed water. And the goal is to find the best way to use and regulate reclaimed water, taking into account the water system plans of the cities and long-term planning considerations. And also reclaimed water, just to define what we're talking about here, reclaimed water is water derived in any part from wastewater treatment system that has been adequately treated so that it's no longer considered wastewater. We also heard some project updates about Mud Mountain Dam Fish Passage Project and the Lake Taps Reservoir ongoing maintenance, including herbicide application. And we heard about a education campaign of Cascade Water Alliance, which is a "we need water because..." So it's "we need water because..." And they take social media and they have some different props to encourage conversation about why we need water. And then for most of the meeting, we talked about budget and rates, and there are two big policy considerations that we are considering. And those are about moving to a two-year budget for the budgets and rates. And a lot of cities are on a two-year budget, so it would coincide with the cities. And then the other thing would be to move to a two-year RCFC rate. And this is the Regional Capital Facilities Charge. So this is the charge for adding new connections to the water system. So we've been discussing that, but the adoption of budgets and rates is slated for September, so it's an ongoing discussion. And the next meeting is July 25 at the Cascade Water Alliance office in Bellevue, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Services and Safety Committee will be meeting on July 10 at 6:30 in council chambers. The agenda at this time includes Agenda Bill 7606, King County-funded homeless shelter and services outside of Seattle fundraising request. And the East Side Fire and Rescue Board will be meeting on July 12 at 4:00. And that agenda has not yet been set. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. Both items from the Infrastructure Committee are on the agendas tonight, so I have no report. We'll talk about it then.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. This coming Thursday on July 5, I'll be attending a meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board. And a number of items on the agenda include, we're going to vote on the PSRC staff's recommendation for full designation for Regional Growth Center status for University Place. University Place recently completed a sub-area plan, the last requirement they needed to meet in order to achieve Regional Growth Center status. Also, as part of the work to update the four county regions' long-term manifesto known as Vision 2040, the board will have an extended in-depth discussion about housing and housing affordability with the eventual goal to identify what PSRC can do to help expand housing opportunities within the region. The current version of Vision calls for doing a needs assessment and developing a housing strategy and programs to implement it, but these have not been completed. The task now is to update the strategy with the latest information and in consideration of the many efforts member jurisdictions have undertaken, such as our city of Issaquah and what we're doing with our housing strategy, and to renew PSRC's efforts to provide value-added contributions to helping with housing affordability. We will also get a review and input from the Regional Transit Oriented Development Advisory Committee on Housing. And we're going to also receive a presentation on the recently completed Regional Open Space Conservation Plan. And then, we haven't had a meeting of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recently, but I did want to report that the Destination Marketing Organization Board Selection Committee got started last Friday, and I think they will be issuing a call for board applicants in the very near future. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Council's Land and Shore Committee meeting will meet July 5, 6:30, right here in council chambers. We have two items are on agenda. They are companion bills, Agenda Bill 7614, High Street Conversion in Issaquah Highlands, and Agenda Bill 7480, the Westridge North Preliminary Platte, which is a quasi-judicial, closed-record matter. And this is the second time that those items have been before the committee, so it is anticipated that the committee won't make a recommendation. That's just anticipated, doesn't mean it will. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Bateese.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The East Side Human Services Forum Board met on Thursday, July 21. And there were a couple of pretty large items on the agenda. First was just the update of the work plan. I was just going to run through the four points that are included in their work plan. The first is to engage and advocate and address emergent human services needs on the east side. The second is to impact local funding and policies. The third is to impact state and federal funding and policies. And the fourth is to enhance forum capacity and strengthen and develop new partnerships. We also went through a new report that has taken, oh, I know, over a year, maybe two years, to put together, which is a funding landscape assessment all across the east side. And I just pulled out a few because I know we've talked about this when we've been looking at our own human services needs, so I just pulled out a few key points that I was going to go over. Respondents reported, on average, an increase of 95% to their budgets to fully achieve their missions, having to add that. There was a 30% gap in expenses of what is needed versus what they need, what they are getting, I'm sorry. Compliance is one of the biggest growth factors that they're experiencing from a financial perspective, is having to do a lot more compliance. And 70% of the agency's reported budgets have not kept up with the service demands. So those were the key points that came out of that east side funding landscape, so that was interesting to go through. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee is going to meet next Wednesday, and that would be the 11th. And there is going to be a pre-PIC workshop that I think council members might be particularly interested in on Vision 2050. Now, in 2050, the Puget Sound metropolitan region is projected to grow by 1.8 million people. I was looking that up. That means that we would be, by 2050, the size of Philadelphia's metropolitan area. Keeping up with the needs of our region's fast-growing population will require thorough planning and wise use of resources to plan for that growth. PSRC recently launched a tier effort to extend the region's growth plan, Vision 2040 to the year 2050, provide a path towards sustaining a healthy environment, thriving communities, and strong economy as the region continues to grow, will identify challenges the region should tackle together, and lay the foundation for local comprehensive plans that guide how each city plans for growth. The July pre-PIC workshop will provide, sorry, SCA members, with an overview of the scope of the 2050 planning update, information on how cities can stay involved, and highlight information trends that are shaping the region. And I will point out that the pre-PIC meetings are open to anyone, not just the PIC representatives or alternates. And we typically get many representatives. For instance, our neighbors to the north, Samamish, always sends a big crew. Not that we should be competitive with Samamish, but I will just point out, this topic seems particularly meaty. There also then, at the regular PIC meeting, will be a discussion on Responsible Recycling Task Force, updates on the Healthy Housing Guideline and Recommendations, the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, and there'll be a homelessness update. And if there are any potential action items to come out of that meeting, I will report back to council. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Now for the mayor's report. It's a little bit long this evening, so bear with me. Meetings over the last couple of weeks. On June 20, I attended Cascade Water Alliance's Finance and Management Committee meeting. This preceded that board meeting that I attended with Councilmember Hunt. Last week, I did send you some questions or proposed budgeting changes that Cascade would like each of its members to review with their boards or councils, so we can do that for the good of the order this evening. On June 21, I attended the King County Members of the PSRC Transportation Policy Board meeting, almost the longest name. We reviewed a list of projects on the 2018 King County-wide grant program and the funding recommendations. And Issaquah does not have a program on this particular list. This list accounts for about 35% of the money that PSRC spends, is in the countywide bucket. On June 28, I attended AWC's annual business meeting in Yakima. Some fun community outreach over the last few weeks. I was up in the Highlands and did a short video at Blakely Hall for our Issaquah, an update on our strategic plan. I think that's available on the Highlands Network. On June 19, I attended one of the Highlands pop-up parties. It was at the Brownstone Plaza. It's a new series of events that they're starting this year with Councilmember Bateese, now that I looked up. June 20, I attended the Strategic Plan Community Open House at the Issaquah Depot. And on June 21 was there with several other council members, Councilmember Winterstein, attending the Association of Volleyball Professionals kickoff at Lake Samamish State Park. On June 26, I co-hosted a neighborhood meeting with Superintendent Ron Thiele, and it was with the Darcy Neighborhood Community, and we met at the Issaquah Middle School. We talked about impacts over the last five or more years to that neighborhood due to the construction of the schools and the capacity of the schools. On June 27, I was a speaker at the Issaquah Kiwanis Club, and on the 29th, a guest speaker up at Talis for the Timber Ridge, for the residents of Timber Ridge. On July 2, today, I attended and gave remarks at the Oath of Office Ceremony welcoming four of our new cadets. We welcomed four new police officers and one new corrections officer today. Police officers are headed to the academy. You'll see them in about a year. It's a long haul for them. Provide an update on a few of the issues that we have been dealing with over the last several months. Cougar Mountain Bergsma update. We have been partnering with the Trust for Public Lands in exploring acquisition options for the parcels known as the Bergsma property, but I have no new information to provide this evening. Squawk-Talis Community Metro Project Update. This is a project that several of our council members have been interested in tracking. It's about transportation options up in Talis and on Squawk. The city has been supporting the King County Metro Community Connections Partnership. Work with our Squawk and Talis communities to help develop solutions for mobility that are well-suited to the specific needs of those hillside communities. 540 residents and workers responded to a survey to identify community-specific mobility needs. The needs that were identified from the survey are now being applied to help shape concept solutions with the intention that they include providing frequent and reliable 24-hour service, they are well-promoted in multiple languages, and that they're focusing on connecting people to transit centers. Right now, the group is working on the concepts, and they will be surveying the community in early July to get some input on the options that they bring forward. Update on Talis Parcel 9. Starting in late November 2015, movement was detected in the Parcel 9 hillside. With safety as our top priority, immediate and ongoing mitigation measures have been taken. On June 18, 2018, the city of Issaquah filed a $2.88 million claim against the property owner of Parcel 9 for the damages and costs incurred by the city related to the hillside movement. The city is working with the law firm Skellinger Bender to represent our interests in this matter. Parties are agreeing to try mediation, which is tentatively scheduled for this fall. An update on the Northwest Gilman Boulevard Corridor Project. This is the portion of Gilman that runs from State Route 900 to Front Street. The city is hosting a community workshop on July 11, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Pickering Barn. The purpose of the workshop is to discuss the goals for Gilman Boulevard, existing corridor assets that should be protected or enhanced, and challenges and opportunities that could be addressed with this project. If you can't attend the workshop, you can see the project's webpage at www.issquahwa.gov/gilman. And you can take our online survey before it closes on July 13. The purpose of the survey is to document the project goals and identify the range of possible improvements for Gilman Boulevard. And that concludes the mayor's report. Proceeding to the consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? So, okay. Is it okay to approve the consent calendar without review? It is? Okay. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Is there a request to... Would you care to make a motion, Councilwoman Martz? There's some extra words here I don't think I need.
Yes, I move the consent calendar as listed in today's agenda.
Second. Is there a request to move anything from the consent calendar? Why I have this on here? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have one item under regular business this evening, AB 7621, Old Town Traffic Calming Funding Request. This is a request to approve and authorize additional funding and authorize a contract. This is coming out of the Council Infrastructure Committee, and I'd like to invite Kurt Seaman -- I have John Mortensen written down, but it looks like Kurt is here -- to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Issaquah Council, happy to be here. I've got a fairly brief presentation to go through that just sort of goes through the Old Town traffic calming story very briefly and gets us quickly to where we are tonight. So, as you all know, as it's been mentioned by many folks, we've been working in Old Town with traffic calming issues for many years, probably starting with the Sunset Interchange maybe before that, and left turns, put-on Sunset, all those kinds of things. And most recently, we've heard a lot of neighborhood feedback. Now's the time to get serious about traffic calming in Old Town, both for traffic speeds through Old Town and traffic volume. So we began a pilot project that was meant to gather neighborhood feedback, collect traffic data, and, most important, try some devices that we thought would have a good opportunity for success to address both the speeding and the cut-through traffic in Old Town. So we began the pilot project with a variety of traffic calming devices. There's a variety of speed hump-type devices. Some of them have paths like this one that you can see that allow, like, fire trucks to go through. We experimented with different spacing. We had no-left-turn signs covered, put bags over them about halfway through the process. And all through this process, we were gathering data, both speeds, volumes, and also, probably most importantly, community data. I think we received well over 300 community comments on this project. I think it was very successful in terms of getting the devices out there, giving people a chance to see how they work. As we mentioned, the speed humps are the preferred device out there. This gives you -- it's a little bit hard to read, but it gives you an idea that we tried a variety of devices out here in the pilot program now. We're looking at, so this was tables, speed tables, humps, chicanes, so less-popular device, traffic circle, and that's about it. So out of that, all that work, we are proposing a more permanent traffic calming installation in Old Town, which this would entail removing the temporary devices and coming back immediately and installing permanent devices. And these devices are all based on all of the input we got from the pilot project, both the speed data and the citizen data. We are adding a couple devices. You'll see here in your map that's in your packet, not sure how well this will come up on the screen, that we are really streamlining the devices. We're going with speed humps generally throughout Old Town, with the exception of the ones, traffic circle, which could look something like this. And we are proposing, it's our recommendation, to permanently remove the no-left-turn signs. We felt that when we bagged them halfway through the pilot program, there was no measurable significant change in either speeds or cut-through traffic. In addition, based on input we received from Council Infrastructure Committee and the public last week, we are proposing an additional speed hump on Andrews Street. So here they are, perhaps a little bit hard to read, but pretty simple to read, really. The purple oval-shaped devices are all speed humps, and they are, there's three of them along Alder Street on the north in the vicinity here, basically one per block, and then one at the entrance to the north Sunset neighborhood. And then a few more devices. This is where we saw the bulk of our speeds and cut-through traffic on the south side of Sunset. So four devices actually on Bush along here, two devices on Andrews. This was where we added one. There was previously to CIC, there was one device in this vicinity, so now we're putting two. We've always proposed to have a traffic circle at the location here because it has a great impact on speed and cut-through in all four directions. There's an additional speed hump proposed on Fourth, and then two on Sixth, which was another street that had a lot of the cut-through volumes and speeds. So there's been some conversation about the alleys. And although this wasn't really a focus of our initial pilot program, we appreciate that alley speeding and volumes may continue to be an issue out there. So we are proposing to gather data, traffic counts and speeds for the alleys, both north and south of Sunset, starting this summer, getting a baseline of what's going on out there this summer. We know that things change after school, so then coming back early fall after school's back in session with a second set of data, and then analyzing that data and determining what mitigation measures may be appropriate if they're warranted. And our plan is to come back to CIC, to counsel CIC Committee this fall with those findings and recommendations specific to the alley. And most importantly, we're recommending to council that we move forward in approving this agenda bill, which will allow us to move forward in installing these devices. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Kurt. Council questions for Kurt? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I have two questions. We heard a comment tonight about if there was a plan to follow up to see how it's working, a check back in. Can you tell me if that's possible, and why or why not?
So I thought that was a great idea. Honestly, we hadn't planned to do that, but I think it's a great idea, and we have enough data out there, certainly both from the pilot program and going forward and data that we'll have from the alleys. Certainly, it would be worth our while. I'd honestly be interested in hearing how the community feels it is working in six months. So we'll certainly, I'll work with a communications group here and see what we can do to go back and poll the community about how we're doing. That's always helpful to us as well.
Thank you. We also received a comment since infrastructure about the word "permanent."
Sure.
So I'm interested, I don't have that, that didn't seem to rise to a concern for me, but I want to hear what you're thinking about the use of the word "permanent" and what that means.
Sure. So it's a great question. So permanent, we're using the word "permanent" as opposed to a pilot program when temporary devices. So permanent meaning we're going to remove those temporary devices, which are typically rubber curbing and rubber bumps that are nailed into the pavement, removing those and replacing them with permanent asphalt speed humps like you see in the picture here. I think if I heard some of the comments from the community, I think one of the concerns with "permanent" was this idea that we're going to do this work in Old Town, and then we'll say, okay, we're done, Old Town, we're never coming back and working with you in any way. And so that's just simply not the case in Old Town anymore than anywhere else in town. And so I feel like we've built a good relationship with the Old Town Committee. We certainly want to maintain that. And I think this six-month idea of doing a follow-up is one great way to do that. But certainly, even in a shorter time than the six months, if there are things that come up or things that we need to adjust or change, we're always looking for ways to improve our transportation system citywide in every community. So permanent... So, permanent in no way means we're done, see you, good luck. It means we're installing these devices.
Thanks. And then, one more question. The removal of the signs.
Yes.
The no-turn signs. What's the harm in keeping them there?
So, yeah, that's a good question. I guess I would answer that by saying the harm is, well, first of all, as I mentioned, we did not, our data didn't show that they provide any additional benefit. The speeds and the cut-through traffic were reduced with the pilot program with the signs there. There were no changes when we covered the signs. So, our conclusion there is that the signs really had no impact. I guess, to answer your question about the harm, a couple of things come to mind. One, we don't really want to have a lot of extra signs. We've got so many signs around the city as it is. We don't want signs that really don't, that aren't obeyed or followed. If these signs, for them to really have impact, probably needs some, some police enforcement, which has not been happening in the past. So, I guess the short answer is, I don't think we need them. I think this program that we have planned, the permanent installations, works to reduce traffic, and so they're not necessary.
Kurt, do they limit local behavior as well, if they're left in place?
Well, that's another, that's another good point. If, one of the advantages of not having them there is it allows local traffic to make turns into their neighborhood in a more direct way than they might have to if they have to go down the second and come back around, let's say. So, so no one's breaking the law with the signs covered or gone, and they can move, they can drive around their neighborhood on the grid that was established for them to drive around the neighborhood on. So, that's another, that's a, that's a great point, actually, of a reason to not have the sign placed going forward.
Thank you.
Additional questions? I see three hands. We'll start with Hunt, Ray, and then Winterstein.
Thank you. The traffic circles, in Council Infrastructure Committee, we talked about some different options for what a traffic circle could look like in the final product. And so, I wondered if you could explain the process that you will use to decide what option they, what option you go with for the traffic circle.
Sure, that's, that's a really good question. I did, we did discuss that a bit in CIC. And so, one of the exciting opportunities with this traffic circle, I think, is we have an opportunity to engage the neighborhood going forward, not so much in the design, but of the circle itself and the diameter and those kinds of things. We'll be relying on traffic engineering judgment for that. But what happens on the inside of the circle has some options. And one of the things that other jurisdictions, City of Seattle, for example, do is they, if there's enough interest and enough commitment from the neighbors, especially adjacent to the traffic circle, to maintain the traffic circle, we'd like to be open to that. We'd like to explore that opportunity for some kind of a landscaping or some kind of a treatment that we would work together with the neighborhood to do in the center. We are not proposing irrigating the circle just because of the cost, but certainly if the neighbors were interested in putting some low plants there that wouldn't obstruct site distance and that they would maintain, I think we would be open to that. We haven't done, to my knowledge, haven't done anything like that before, but it sounds interesting. And certainly, if we can get some interest from the neighborhood, we'll be exploring that going forward as we design this circle.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question. There is a lot of other neighborhoods around that have traffic issues and similar concerns as this Old Town neighborhood had as far as the need for traffic calming. And as I understand it, the temporary devices can be moved. That's one of the benefits of using temporary devices in a pilot system. And so, I wondered if you could talk a little bit about next steps for the temporary devices? What's the plan as far as using them elsewhere in the city?
So, you're right, those, that is a great benefit of having these temporary pilot program devices. One thing that we know that we need to do citywide is have a more current, more, I would say, useful and more applicable traffic calming program citywide. So, we're in the, we're in the process of updating our citywide traffic calming program, which currently, the one we have on the books now, I think, dates to the early 2000s. So, that's getting pretty old. So, we're in the process of looking at best practices in the region and taking those best practices and applying, applying them to what we're going to do here, as well as all of the good things that we've learned on this pilot program. So, short answer is, we're going to be updating our traffic calming program citywide. And yes, there may be opportunities to use these devices in other parts of town, but we feel like the first and most important step initially is to update that traffic calming program. That's a work item, a 2018 work item still left to do. So, we're hopefully planning to come back to council CIC with more to come on that traffic calming citywide program this fall.
Let's remember Ray.
So, Kurt, can, on page 197 of the packet, there's a financial breakdown of all the costs associated with, with putting in the permanent traffic calming measures. Could you just walk through that?
I can.
And you can skip over, from my point of view, what speed humps and traffic circles are, but I'm kind of curious about what the other things include.
I'm going to find it here without going through 197 pages. So, sure, it's a short list, and it's an engineer's estimate, and pretty standard stuff. There's unit prices for speed humps and traffic circles, as you mentioned. Traffic control is the, the amount that we'll need to pay the contractor to provide traffic control during the installation of the, of the devices. Removal of temporary devices is pretty self-explanatory. Our plan there is to somewhat sequentially, or mostly sequentially, remove devices as we install new ones, so that we're never really without traffic calming devices on any of the streets. A minor change is a, is a standard contract item that is in there to, just to cover any unforeseen conditions. And then mobilization is a standard item as well that compensates the contractor for showing up, bringing all their equipment, and getting the site ready for construction. And then in addition, there's some contingency on that estimate, as you can see, and construction management is from our end to manage the contract and the construction.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Councilmember? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. You answered a couple of my questions already. This won't be a fantastic one, however. Just so I understand the data that's in the report, on the tables where you have the data summary, where you have the counts, just tell me a little bit about that. You have, are those, I imagine those are like average per day in some window of time? Just where do those, what are those counts?
Right, so, without getting into all the messy details there, what you, what we've, I don't know exactly all what you have in your packet, but just looking at what I have in the agenda bill.
That's what I have.
Okay, so that's, there's, it looks like what we've summarized here, and there's a lot more data behind what you see here, is, just to pick an example, Bush Street. So, there was three times where we collected data, April 2017, November 2017, and January 2018. This, we put a variety of speed counters throughout the neighborhood, so we can find out exactly where this location was. But in general, it's along Bush, and it measures both the number of, number of vehicles, and then the 85th percentile speed, which very briefly is the speed at which 85% of the cars are going or, or less. So, 85% of the cars, for example, in this eastbound Bush Street example, are going 29 miles an hour or less. Is that, does that?
No. What is the, okay, the next column over? This be the counts?
Right. So, those are the.
Those like per day or in a window of time during the day?
Those would be typically, those would be typically average daily counts. Two hundred vehicles a day, I believe, yes.
Okay, so that's a full 24-hour average daily? That's, that's all I was wondering.
Okay. And we can certainly provide you more data if you'd like to.
I just wanted to understand the numbers. I look at counts, and there's 20-some trips. Is that for a two-hour period, or is that for a 24-hour period?
It's typically for a 24-hour period.
Okay, thank you.
Let's enter Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. So, I come from Minnesota, and they don't do these speed hump things because it's bad for plows. So, I have a question about, we don't get snow a lot, but we do sometimes get snow. Do we have any operational concerns? I mean, I know we have a couple of other places in the city we have speed humps, but do you have any operational concerns about adding these speed humps to, in terms of the city's response to snow events?
We do, we've worked closely, concerns is a fair word. We've worked closely with our operations folks, and they have concerns. As you mentioned, snow's not a huge big deal here, but when it snows, we like to plow our streets. This is not, these are not our primary streets, first of all, and, but yes, they're going to have to use an additional amount of care on these speed humps that they would not have to if they weren't there. So, it's a trade-off. It's, it's a similar, I don't, this is embedded in your question, but there's similar concerns with eastside fire and rescue and response time. Same idea, they would prefer all else being equal, to not have them, but they also understand the pluses and minuses. So, I think that in some ways applies both to EFER and to our operations folks.
And then, the second part of my question is around quality control. So, some of us have low-slung cars, and if I was going to go over to my friend, Councilmember Ramos's house, and how would I be confident that I wouldn't be scraping the underside of my car on these things?
So, first of all, I should talk about, so, the typical speed hump is a pretty standardized design nationwide, and it's not, so this is a speed hump that would be installed in a right-of-way. It's a very gradual, I think it's about a four-inch height over about 12 feet. I'm not exactly, those numbers may not be exactly right, but that's sort of the scale of things. So, these are not what you would see in a parking lot, which are fairly, typically fairly short, maybe only a foot wide and maybe six inches tall. Those are the ones that will, can damage low-slung cars and really give you a jar. That is not what we're building here in an Old Town.
Great. Thank you for both of those answers.
Let's remember Ray, and then Councilmember Batiste.
I just have a follow-up on the cost number. So, the construction management, that's our staff's time to manage the work.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Are those resources new, or those already in the organization?
So, those are, those are resources that we have. Typically, the way we do things is we, our inspectors and our engineers bill against projects, so.
I guess what I'm, what I'm really driving at are those, it's part of what's coming before us is an ask for new money, net new money. And I think that those dollars already exist right now, so I think this ask is a little bit inflated by that $50,000.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is typically how we've presented budgets, so.
Project budgets?
Yes.
Just so that the council can understand the full cost.
The full cost.
But the ask does not need to be for.
That's, that's what I was thinking, is that, I think this makes sense. I like capturing all the costs, including the ones that are internal costs. But I think when, when we get to the point of the discussion about how many net new dollars do we need to put into the budget to fund this, I don't think we need that $50,000. I think those resources are currently budgeted.
Yes, they are, those resources are budgeted.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Batiste.
Thank you. I, I just had a question regarding the finances. We have this, the recommendation is that this comes from the School Zone Safety Fund as opposed to going forward into the, a request for the 2019 budget. I, and I'm not sure if you have the answer to this, but are there other large projects that we would be looking at that might be coming out of that School Zone Fund, Safety Fund coming forward?
Not that I'm, not immediately that I'm aware of. This is the only one with a substantial amount of dollars that's come. And in fact, I don't think we've used this school, this school fund budget before. So, this is money that's accumulated over the last few years. And it seemed like a good candidate, it seemed like a good use of that money, seems consistent with a description of what that money could be used for. So, that's why we're proposing to take it from the school. But we don't have, if your question is, do we have other projects lined up to, to go against that money, the answer is no. Not, not at this time.
More questions? I'm wondering, Councilmember Ramos, if you want to make a motion, and then his chair maybe provide a few comments after the motion's seconded?
Yes, I'll do that, because there is a few things in committee that we didn't have absolutely 100% ironed out. So, I'll read the motion here, and then I'll explain some of that parts of it. So, move to approve the proposed traffic calming layout for Old Town, that was one. And two, direct the finance director to include $310,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment for the Old Town Traffic Calming Project utilizing School Zone Safety Fund. And three, authorize the administration to enter into and execute construction contract up to $310,000 for removing the temporary traffic calming devices and installing traffic calming devices consistent with the approved layout.
For a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and Councilmember Ramos, if you'd like to give us.
Yeah, so, a little more in-depth on it, because there's a few things that, from the committee meeting, three that I'll talk about. First was, when we looked at the layout, it was, it became obvious with, with the, there was an additional, from the temporary pilot project, there was an additional three devices added. And when we looked at all that, the, it looked like Andrews Street had much less devices than other streets. And it looked like out of balance where Andrews might be more attractive to folks than Bush. So, if you went around the sixth, the Bushway, there were six speed humps. If you went the Andrews Way, there was only two. Look at that, and there was a decision there. We asked them to look at Andrews and see if they could consider doing something additional Andrews, which they did. They added an additional speed hump from what we looked at at committee. And that would be between, so between fourth and second, there'd be two versus one speed hump. Everything else remained the same. So, that's the first item, there was a change there. Second item, I did ask staff at that time also to remove the word "permanent" from being used, and, and that was my request. That wasn't done, so it was still there. So, I dropped those words out of here because it gave the feeling to, to folks that this is a permanent finished thing, 100% done, never going to have, come back again and look at it. And things aren't permanent, you build them in asphalt, nothing's permanent in asphalt. And so, the difference is, it's going from temporary to more structural, definitely. But permanent, to me, it gave a different feel for that to the, to the community. And Mr. Seaman's talked about that and said, yes, that's not correct. We're, we're not going to walk away and forget about this neighborhood and so forth. So, he backed that up. So, that was the second item. And the third one came after the fact, where Sheldon came to me and, and mentioned that the way this was written, that they would, the city would have to come back to council for an additional agenda bill just to execute the contract, because we didn't have the right wording in there. So, item three of this motion is basically just fixing that technical glitch where we don't have to do an agenda bill to actually authorize the next contract. And it may even not even be its own contract, they may be add it on to an existing contract, and, and so that may happen as well. So, it would be completed tonight with the additional item three on there and not have to come back to council for an additional thing. So, those three changes, some added additional device, I, we took the word "permanent" out, and we added item three to save us approving another agenda bill. So, those are the three things that came kind of after the committee met.
Thank you. Let's member Goodman.
Thank you. So, I have a question. So, my understanding, and Billy, you can probably answer, it sounds like one and two were the recommendations that came out of committee, and number three was after the fact.
Correct.
So, it would seem to me procedurally that one and two should be the motion, because that would be the recommendation that came out of the committee. And that if a committee member wanted to make a motion to amend the recommendation, that that would be, that would be procedurally the way to go, because the recommendation from the committee was unanimous, as I recall.
Right, but there are a couple other, it wasn't a totally complete, because we had two items that weren't complete as far as the devices being, things are going to be added to this, so what we had, but we asked them to go back and do those things. And I also requested the word "permanent" be removed, so.
Let me check with the clerk on the, you know, does it make sense to move one and two as the main motion and then have somebody amend it? Or is it the way it's structured, still meeting your requirements?
The motion, in its entirety, is fine.
It's fine.
You could also vote on one motion at a time, or you could vote two, and then vote the other.
Okay.
I still have the floor, after you.
You can have the floor.
I guess my, my objection is that I understand what you're saying, Bill, but my understanding, being on the committee, is that it was, you did have a question about permanent, but the recommendation that comes forward from the committee should be the, should be the motion that's made, and then there are amendments to the motion. That, to me, procedurally should be the, the way that it's done. And then, the, the third item, to kind of clean things up, number three, that would, that would be an additional motion. That's the way I think it's proper, because that's the way the committees work, and, so I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right way to go about it, because I don't think that it respects the committee's work to do that.
So your path forward would be to propose an amendment to the motion and see if you get a second? Motion right now includes all three parts.
I would propose, okay, that I would propose, I would make a, I would move to amend the motion to add the word "permanent" back into number one, and to delete number three to be a separate motion after we decide on the committee's recommendation, which was be number one and two with the word "permanent."
So it's been moved to amend the motion, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
I'm interested to hear about the, the word "permanent." I think, to me, it was to distinguish the temporary devices from longer-term devices. I do also, to some degree, understand the concern about permanent and the feeling that it's done, but I, I seconded the motion because I think we could discuss it, and if we're going to have a lot more traffic calming devices using these temporary devices, it would be good to know how we, how we go forward using the correct terminology for "permanent," if that's, if there's concerns about using that terminology.
Discussion? Member Goodman?
So I, I don't have any heartburn over the word "permanent." I think it's just, just like Councilmember Hunt said, it's to distinguish between temporary and not temporary. And then we heard from Kurt Seaman that the intention is not to turn, turn back on a community, but it's, we now have a permanent plan, a permanent way to address traffic calming, and it's not just calling the police and hoping they'll come, or flagging down people and asking them to slow down. It's actually a, a permanent, a permanent installation, so that we, it's a permanent plan that we've installed, it's no longer temporary, it's no longer a pilot, and, so I don't have any heartburn over the use of the word "permanent" at all. I don't, and I, anyway.
Okay, I have five more council members. Who else would like to comment before we vote? Let's, President Mertz.
I'll comment. So, I will be voting against this amendment. I think there's, there's two separate issues here, right? One is the use of the word "permanent." I, I think because we've had some public comment concerning the use of the word "permanent," I think it's fine to take it out. You know, in terms of when a, you know, there's, there's, I believe, without looking it up, that there's a lot of precedent for bills that have essentially, what's effectively housekeeping, between coming back from committee and, and full council, where the intent, permanent changes the intent, I will agree, but number three seems to be a, a housekeeping piece to basically implement the policy that would, that was recommended out of committee. So, based on that, I, I would prefer not to set a precedent that says that any changes that come back, I feel like this would, if we move forward with this amendment, that part of it would set a precedent that says that, you know, essentially, any housekeeping changes after committee would have to come in as an amendment, and I'm, I don't, I don't think we need to do that, so. But I, I do recognize that permanent pieces is policy change.
Thank you. Let's, Member Ray.
I'm struggling with this a bit, but when I think about it, if we amend it and take out part number three, we're going to just turn around and amend it and put it back in, because it's, it's good structure. So, as opposed to getting all, kind of caught up in the process, I would rather move ahead with the, the motion as currently offered. And I think it is our right to make, as a council member, to make whatever motion we choose to make on any issue that we choose, or we, that we are talking about. So, I think this was in Councilmember Ramos's purview to make the motion the way he did.
Thank you. Any other comments? I will, oh, so what we're voting on is an amendment to the main motion that would remove the word "permanent" from number one, and remove the third bullet, authorize the administration to enter into and execute a contract up to $310,000 for removing the temporary traffic calming devices and installing permanent traffic calming devices consistent with the approved layout. That's what's being removed. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Amendment fails, six to one. Before going back to the main motion, Councilmember Ray, I just wanted to check in with you on number three. You had talked about the $50,000 of the staff time.
I would like to make a amendment to the motion. On point number two, I'd like to strike where it says $310,000 and replace it with $260,000 for the subsequent budget amendment, because the $50,000 is already in the 2018 budget, in, in Public Works Engineering's budget. And on section number three, I'd like to strike the $310,000 and replace it with $260,000, as the contract limit per the budget we looked at is really only $260,000, not $310,000.
For a second?
Second.
Maybe a second. Kurt, can I get you to come up and address that? I want to make sure that that change isn't actually doing something we didn't intend it to do.
So I think, so I think that's fine. I think, as, as I mentioned earlier, our standard way of preparing capital project budgets is to show our time in the budget as we have here, the $50,000, but that's not it. We're not hiring anybody, we're not having to bring new people on to cover that $50,000. That is staff that's currently here at the city that would be doing that construction inspection and managing that construction project. So, no new staff is involved, no new dollars are involved for that. It's just, it's just simply the way we've shown our budgets, and maybe we want to, maybe we want to relook at that going forward, but that's, that's what it is.
I actually, I think that's good. I do think the council of ages before did like to see full project costs, so that they understood both the internal and external, but under our financial information section of our agenda bill, we can clarify what the contract ask is.
Yes.
Thank you. So, that's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Councilmember Winterstein, followed by Council President Mertz and Councilmember Hunt.
It's a little unclear to me, so I, I thought we did capex versus opex-type budgeting, which means you, when you do capital projects, you authorize a budget for the entire expenditure, and we want to note that this is coming from the, the Safety Camera Fund. If we don't do it that way, then your accounting department doesn't have a way of actually keeping track of the internal staff time charged against that fund. So this is, this enables the type of accounting that we do internally. Doesn't, it doesn't authorize additional spend, because the, so, I, I think this, my interpretation has always been that this is because of the type of accounting that we do. That's why it's in there. And so I, I think it should stay in there. I, I don't think it should be amended.
Council President Mertz, and Councilmember Hunt.
Can you say that again? I'm confused.
It's, it's my understanding that, and I wish the, if someone in finance was here, that we do for Public Works Engineering, the type of accounting, we do what's known as capex versus opex, capital versus operational. Also, capital expenditures, also sometimes known as project expenditures, where you identify, when you authorize a project, and you identify the full funding source for that project. You consider the entire funding requirement for that. And in this case, the, with the proposed money coming from the Safety Camera Fund, by authorizing even that line item for that amount into this project budget, then when the Keith, or, excuse me, Kurt's staff, whoever in the staff works on this project and allocate and record their time, it will go against those dollars that came from that fund. And that's the, that, because we choose to do accounting that way. And if, if it doesn't, then, then their time would just be, come from the general fund, and we would lose visibility into how much staff time was spent on this project.
Got it. Okay, so my comments are, I suspect this is a larger issue than this one particular bill. And fortunately, several of the people who've brought up questions here tonight are on the Ad Hoc Finance Committee, they can discuss it. My concern around, my concern around this issue is that we have many things that come before us that involve staff time. And if we're going to have two different kinds of staff, staff that we expect to be able to recover funds for, and staff we don't, then we should plan accordingly. But my concern really revolves around getting to a point where council has something that we want to do, and we say, okay, well, that's going to take, you know, 10% of Chief Beerbaum's time at, you know, some rate, and, you know, an FTE worth of the Communications Department, you know, for two months at some other rate, and, and things that are expected to be part of staff's normal operations getting monetized in an attempt to show cost where historically we haven't done that, right? And this issue came up when we discussed fireworks a couple of years ago, and the city was thinking about doing fireworks, and we sort of monetized staff time and said how much it was going to cost in a way that didn't seem consistent with how we normally consider policy in the city. So, I don't know what to do about this evening, to be honest with you, but I think that we do need to have a conversation about where we want to track costs, and it's specifically around people that are not billable, and making sure that however we do this, we don't all of a sudden attempt to, you know, conflate policy costs with non-billable staff. I see that the mayor is having a chat with our acting city administrator on this subject, and thinking maybe they have some thoughts.
Checking in with the acting interim deputy, or city administrator and director of sustainability. There's a couple of things to think about. I believe Councilmember Winterstein is right in the way we do our projects, and that all of the costs, both our internal and contract costs, will come out of the traffic calming fund, just meaning that it's a bookkeeping thing the way they do it. However, Councilmember Ray has a good point. The contract itself that's awarded, which is mentioned once, is only $260,000, so it may not be a matter of changing every time you see 310 to 260, but the award of the contract should not exceed 260. So, if I have this right, David? Direct the, it would, it would read, approve the proposed traffic calming layout for Old Town, number one. Number two, direct the finance director to include $310,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget adjustment amendment for the Old Town Traffic Calming Project utilizing the School Safety Fund. And three, authorize the administration to enter into and execute construction contract up to $260,000. And that might get you all where you want to be. I'm looking at Councilmember Ray.
I don't think that's right.
Okay.
I, I still don't think that's right, because when we're asking for a budget amendment, we're actually saying, in my understanding, is we're asking for new money from existing funds that didn't exist in the 2018 budget. Is that a correct assumption I'm making?
Um, yes. It's adjusting the budget.
But it was not money that was proposed, was approved in the 2018 budget.
It may, Kurt might be able to help us here, I'll try calling a friend. When PWE tracks their time against different projects, in the end, do the salary costs line up with a salary item in the budget, so that this is not actually asking for additional salary? Is that your concern, is we're actually changing salary?
Well, I think what we're doing is, we're, we're double accounting for this $50,000. We've already put it in the budget for PWE staff, and now we're asking for it again. So we're double accounting for it. And if it's an issue of moving funds around, I'm okay with authorizing finance to move funds around.
You're not there.
And moving between fund balance, I'm not okay with saying, here's an additional $50,000 for staff time that you already have.
Right.
So I think I, I'm getting myself in trouble here, because I'm not, don't know that much about, I can speak to how, as I mentioned earlier, how Public Works Engineering tracks their costs, which is what we've shown here in this budget. It's, it's along the lines of what Mr. Winterstein has spoken to, which is, it's a way of us tracking our costs, our real costs, our staff time against projects. So, that's why we typically have it in our budgets, that's why it's shown here, so that as we move forward this project, our inspectors, our, our construction engineer, all of those folks will bill to this project, and we will be able to track at the end of day our real costs to that, so that we have a, a way of knowing how much time projects take. And also, you're also right that we're not, to be clear, not hiring new staff or a new construction inspection firm to do this work. This is work being done internally by our folks in PWE.
Or I think also, Councilmember Ray, say, also not increasing an authorized salary line.
Correct.
That would already be in the budget.
That's right.
Which is his concern.
It's a track, it's a, it's an accounting, it's a tracking mechanism.
Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Ray?
I might suggest that we go forward with the way the mayor kind of rephrased that potential change. I think that was a change on what the current motion on, or amendment is, because it, and, and I would vote in favor of that, fully knowing that there already has been appropriated in some fund, and maybe the general fund and maybe somewhere else, for the salaries of, at least a portion of the salaries of the employees, it would be included, knowing fully well that we're saying, okay, now money out of this traffic safety fund, we're going to earmark this for this project, charge your time against that, not charge, and therefore don't burn the other dollars that have already been allocated, knowing, I know, because that happens all the time. But then, ask that finance could come back and just answer that question for us, and then the council can decide if it wants to take another corrective step in, in upping or lowering some amount of approval in one of the funds. As I'd rather, I, I think, I think the chances are that it's a normal, and, and there's no harm to this practice, but would ask that we can come back and get clarification, and at that time decide if we need to make an adjustment. That's where I would stand.
Just one clarification, the motion on the table right now uses $310,000 in both parts, okay.
Right. So I was commenting about your version of that, should we amend the amendment?
Gotcha.
Or should the amendment fail?
Councilmember Hunt?
I have a clarifying question, I'm not sure who, but does the, does the amendment to making this $260,000, would that change the amount of money that's taken from the School Zone Safety Fund for this project?
Sounds like a simple question. I don't know. I do think that's kind of what, now Councilmember Winterstein is saying, there's some accounting going on here, but tell us what Jack, what is actually going on here? Is that an allocation that is taken out of the fund as well?
That's my...
I don't have that answer. That is what I believe we were being asked to bring back.
Okay. That, because that seems like that fundamentally changes whether this is a, a amendment that is actually just clarifying how the money is being moved around versus actually saying that we're going to take less money from a specific fund that is separate from the existing fund, right, system balance.
I believe if the budget adjustment says $310,000, which is point number two, that's the one where I have to come back and tell council whether or not that's $310,000 out of that fund, or if the salaries stay where they are. of that fund or if the salaries stay where they are. On the second, the third point, though, I believe what we're trying to do with Councilmember Ray is to make sure we don't award a contract in excess of $260,000, which seems to be the outside, external contract cost.
If I might, a clarification question. What is a 2018 budget amendment?
What is a 2018?
What is it? I mean, what does that document do? I mean, I think it's really at the heart of this question because if what we're really asking to do is to move funds around and that's all the amendment does, then that's a different question. If this is saying this is going to be an increase to our 2018 budget of some amount, I just can't get, I can't get there because there's, there's cost accounting, which is what Kurt's talked to, which is I track my costs and I know what goes where and I can, I can do good reporting and that's just good practice and I'm all for that. But then there's financial accounting, which is a completely different beast, which says this is what money comes in and this is what money goes out and here's what it went out to do. And, you know, and in that financial accounting, there's the fund accounting. So I'm okay if we want to move, move things around from funds, but I'm not okay with authorizing another $310,000 for this project because that's overstates the cost to the city of doing this work.
So I think there's three parts to that. One is the, the project budgeting. I think everybody's kind of getting that now, why we try and put all the costs in there. The budget amendment, you're, you are giving the administration, you are authorizing us to spend this amount from this account and it is in addition to the other authorizations you've given under the 2018 budget. So yes, it's added on. It's an add-on.
So I would be okay if we said, and we're going to take $50,000 in a, do a negative entry coming out of the PWE salary fund, then I could do that.
That's a part of the bookkeeping I cannot give you the answer on tonight. I assume that's what you want.
Yeah.
But I don't have that answer for you tonight. You're right, that is the, that is the finance system versus the budget amendment, which is so much, that's not, not something I can answer tonight. So that may, may be hard for you to vote.
So I think, and I'm hardly chairing this meeting, but I think we have a couple of options. I think if it is the will of the council to make point number two, read $310,000, we can amend the amendment, change that. Or I would be happy to take these two things separately and withdraw the amendment that's currently on the table and make, make two separate amendments and deal with these two line items separately.
Okay. So I believe there is no amendment on the table right now. We're doing the main motion as.
No, there's an amendment on the table.
Oh, was it moved and seconded to change that number? Okay. So you'd like to remove that with the agreement of your second and then vote on these individually?
I think that would be cleaner and I think it would make for an easier discussion.
Okay. So the proposed amendment to adjust the dollar amount in point three from 310,000 to 260,000, the maker of the motion and the second are agreeing to withdraw that?
That's not the correct amendment.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was in point two to strike 310.
Oh, sorry, point, point two.
And replace it with 260.
And replace it with 260.
And in point three to strike 310 and replace it with 260.
Okay, so both of those.
Yes.
And the maker of the motion and the second agree?
Restate which, you were drawing it?
I'm withdrawing the motion and I'm going to make another amendment.
His amendment, he's withdrawing his amendment.
Okay, I'm second and I'm with you. I'll let you do it again.
Okay, so I'm going to try and make this easier, at least tidier. So I'd like to move to amend the motion on the table to strike $310,000 from point number three for the contract, construction contract and replace it with $260,000.
Second.
Moved and seconded? And we'll deal with this amendment first. Discussion. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah, I think this would be a mistake. I think it's, it's your, the negative, this, what I said earlier about maybe having the finance come back and, and tell us kind of how they would do this, but by authoring the 310, it allows, the budget amendment would come through and said, let's take, you know, 50 of this out of that fund and we'll move it to whatever fund pays the salaries for Kurt's staff and then they could charge against it. That'll happen. And that's what we want to have happen. Now, is there already 50 in a fund somewhere to pay for those salaries? Perhaps, and that's what I'm saying, let's have, let's get a clarification and if then, at that time, we think we need to make some adjustment, we do it then. But by this proposal, you're not allowing, you're basically saying, Kurt, you and your team can't do cost accounting.
Councilmember Ray?
No, that's, that's not what I'm saying because that's why I'm talking about point three. I'm saying that we're, I'm going, we should only authorize the mayor or the administration to sign a construction contract up to $260,000 because that contract does not include any of.
Did you just change two, didn't you?
No, I changed three.
No, you edited through.
I was taking the easy one first, I thought.
Yep.
So I just want to be clear that the contract award would be capped at 360, not at, 260, thank you, not at 310.
So, so I apologize, I misunderstood that, that motion. So if you're, so the motion is to change number three to 260?
Correct.
Okay. I did misunderstand that.
You're good with that?
I understand it.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ramos, there we go.
So, so I guess, I see a lot of what's going on here and this is historically a problem I've had continuing with the budget also. And it is a reason why at the end of the year, we always have way underspent our budgets because we add amendments that always add all these full costs that are, have already been accounted for somewhere else and we never take out, amendments only add, they never take out, they never balance, they never do that. And I see in this case, it's critical because it's shifting to a different fund. So in this case, we really have to show it because we do want to pay those folks out of this fund, not the other funds that would be shown for, or normally charged to. So this is a problem I'd like to really take on in the long-term here. Our finance committee folks are working on that because this is, it is, it is very misleading because it always looks like we're adding all this extra money to the budget where often we are not. So in this case today, I will be supporting this amendment as, as we've gotten it now. But I do want to work in the future to show those that we don't keep adding costs in or an amendment, budget amendments could also take costs out if we're moving them around or doing something with it so we can be a little more accurate and not have a whole bunch of underspent budget at the end of the year. And it looks like we didn't do something, whatever. It looks very strange. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Goodman?
I just think it's been a very long time, if ever, that we've seen a project that shows the staff time for design and construction management. So I think that's part of the confusion. And I think that the other confusion was just a simple language in the agenda bill that could have cleared it up. I don't, it's unfortunate that it was that convoluted.
Thanks. More comments? I'm going to call for the vote on the amendment. And the amendment is for point three, authorize the administration to enter into and execute construction contracts up to $260,000 for removing the temporary traffic calming devices and installing traffic calming devices consistent with approved layout. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Did you have a second amendment?
I do not.
Okay. Are there other, any other amendments or additional discussion? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. So I want to compliment staff for the work that you did on this pilot project. I think it was fantastic. And we've heard almost nothing but positive comments about how this project, how this temporary pilot project went down. And I also want to thank the community for, somebody mentioned 17 years, that's been way longer than 17 years. It's been since the 90s that this community, this area of town has been concerned about traffic through the neighborhoods. And so I want to thank the community for being patient and diligent and what I think has been very respectful in facing some really not good conditions for a long, 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 long period of time. So I'm very excited about this for the, for the neighborhood and just really happy that we're finally getting this done.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Ramos, followed by Councilmember Hunt?
Yeah, yes, I too would like to thank everybody involved in this. It was, it was a while in coming. I think we've got something that everybody's going to feel pretty good with. Just a little aside, thank you also for getting the chicanes out as quickly as possible. I will just mention that when they came out that day and the speed hump went in and the first few cars that flew down the street didn't see the chicanes and they hit that hump pretty hard and got some air. But other than that, they were surprised and it didn't happen a second time. But yeah, I think it's going to be a great addition and I think it's really working well. As you can see, we don't have a lot of people here trying to change it again. So I think that shows the good work and thanks to staff and all the, all the data collection and analyzing all that stuff to show what we had and get something that's going to work for the long-term. And it's my neighborhood, so I'm, I'm behind it as well.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. I want to echo a lot of things that Councilmember Goodman and Councilmember Ramos said. I think this was a pilot in a number of ways and it, it showed in the data, a reduction in speeds and a reduction in number of cars. So it was successful in that way and I think it was also successful in terms of engagement with the community. And it's something that, it's really important that the community engages on because there are traffic devices right in front of their homes potentially and they affect day-to-day life. So I thought it was a successful pilot in a number of ways and I, I think we learned a lot. And I'm excited that these are temporary devices that were in the pilot and that they can be used in other places and that we can use the lessons learned in other parts of the city where they have similar ongoing concerns. And I did want to mention one other thing from the council infrastructure committee, which is that the staff really took into account our concerns about the alleys. And I think that that for me is the remaining piece here for this particular neighborhood because the alleys, there is, is this concern. I'm glad that we're going to collect and evaluate the data and see if we can do something about that. It was not in the original plans, but it's one of the things that we learned about. Again, the process of learning from this pilot was that there is this ongoing concern about the alleys. And so I would like to see that addressed. And again, I just wanted to thank the community for coming out and I think this was a good example of the community being engaged and listening respectfully on all sides.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Winterstein?
Quickly, I want to echo those comments and those made earlier about thanking the community for their participation. I did that walkabout and to get to this point, you know, it's a really good example of very active participation in your local government and your voices were part of this solution. So thank you very much. I also remember last year when this was being proposed, Kurt, and I sat in an infrastructure meeting down at one of these tables with you and you seemed kind of generally excited about this idea of doing a pilot because I think in your experience, you hadn't done something like this. And I hope that the way that this is concluding, or at least where it is at this stage right now, what you, what you got out of that, what you learned, you'll be able to, you know, take that back and kind of reapply, I think, some of the practices and the approaches that were learned here and applied here in, in future projects. So I'm grateful you had that chance as well. My last comment would simply be, I think this is, we can, we can check one box, I think, on our to-do list related to Old Town. There's a number of other things and I for one am very, very interested in sidewalks and stormwater and other things about the mobility infrastructure in that area and look forward to discussing and doing something about that with the rest of you in the near future.
Thank you. Ms. Batiste?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo what a lot of council members have already said. I just wanted to thank the community for all of the input and the patience. This has been a long time coming and it's something that I'm excited to see going forward. And also just in regard to the pilot project, being able to look at that and seeing that be a success and a model that we can use going forward, I think that's really important. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? Before we vote, I am going to read the motion because it was changed many times. I want to make sure I have all the words right. It was moved to approve the proposed traffic calming layout for Old Town and direct the finance director to include $310,000 in a subsequent 2018 budget amendment for the Old Town traffic calming project utilizing the school zone safety fund and authorizing the administration to enter into and execute construction contracts up to $260,000 for removing the temporary traffic calming devices and installing traffic calming devices consistent with the approved layout. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Kurt, please make sure to pass on praise to John Mortensen as well. This was his project and he wasn't able to be with us tonight, but it's, it's been good. Thank you. Next order of business this evening is good of the order. Does anybody have anything for good of the order? I have a couple of items. Anybody else? Okay. July 9th, council work session. The agenda items will include the water system plan again, permitted land uses in central ISQA development and citywide strategic plan. The July 16th regular council meeting, the potential agenda items include the consideration to adopt the park strategic plan, consideration to approve the West Ridge North preliminary plat, and that one is the quasi judicial closed record item. I had a couple of items I wanted to go over from the Cascade Water Alliance Finance Committee. Vicky mentioned a couple of them briefly, but they are going to be making some changes to their financial policies and they wanted us to bring it back to each of the governing bodies just to run them by you. I sent it out earlier by email. The first one was Cascade was desiring to adopt two-year rates with a truing up in the second year prior to the presentation of the next two-year draft budget. And there are some pros and some cons to that, which I put in the email. We're not on a two-year budget cycle yet, but many of our partner cities and agencies are, but we are likely headed that way. The one concern that I had heard is that if the rates are not as accurate as they could be in the second year, the city may actually be paying ahead for that year until the truing up occurs later on in the year. So any concerns with that or any comments on that one? Councilmember Goodman?
Does the finance director have any, did she have any comments on it?
I have not had comments back from the finance director yet. I have just had comments back from executive office and Public Works. So if she has concerns with it, I will, I can put those, bring those back to the Cascade board.
Thank you.
The second one was whether or not Cascade should adopt two-year RCFC rates, which are the fees that we charge folks to join into our system. This one seemed to not be very controversial. The number of connection charges for new service has been fairly consistent and the pricing has been fairly consistent for a very long time. This did not generate a lot of discussion. Any concerns? None. The last item, what level of seismic resilience he should Cascade budget to, did cause quite a discussion in the finance committee. Right now Cascade is proposing $200,000 per year to fund this new item, which would be a way to prepare for emergencies by stockpiling pipes and parts on the east side so that during an earthquake or another major event, our crews, Cascade crews could, or Seattle crews could work together to repair infrastructure and get it back online faster. The concerns that we heard, and I did get this from both Public Works Operations and Engineering, is that we do that already for our system and concerned that this might be a duplicative effort where everybody's stockpiling stuff everywhere to a higher degree than we need to. So this one sort of was a bit controversial and it reminds me of when Eastside Fire and Rescue was looking to set up an emergency fund a few years ago and the partners all came forward and said, we have reserve funds and we don't want to be using taxpayer rates or fees to set up duplicative funds. So your thoughts on this one? Ms. Batiste?
My thoughts would be, you said it was $200,000 per year?
Yep.
Was the bogey? So my question is, do we have an understanding of what we think the fiscal, or I shouldn't say fiscal risk, do we think we have an understanding of what the resiliency needs would be and how does this compare? If we think that, you know, there's going to be, in the event of either, you have to think, right, two different scenarios, one's a Cascadia subduction fault, the other is a surface fault. And I don't know which has larger implications because I think a subduction fault causes more ridge failures, but a surface fault might cause more ruptures, local ruptures. So I don't know, but if you consider those and you say, okay, there's some risk associated with it and let's say it's $10 million a year, or 10 million bucks, right, for the system. Well, it might be that, you know, 200,000 from Cascade Water plus whatever we're doing are both steps in the right direction, but maybe neither sufficient. But if we feel like we understand the risk and we, as a city, are, are stockpiling to a sufficient level for that risk, then I do, then I could see the concern about being duplicative. So to me, it's really how do these two efforts compare? So to me, it's really, how do these two efforts compare to the assessed risk? And does that risk, do we know more as a result of Cascadia rising, which looks specifically at a subduction fault event?
So I believe right now, because it's strictly from the financial point of view, they do not have that risk dollar amount that you're talking about, nor the information about what various jurisdictions or Seattle is doing. I think the thought was to just, this was a financially responsible thing to do. So a great suggestion, if they do not have the number, would be to say that we ask them to do more homework and come back when they have the picture to start doing this, instead of starting to do this before we have the true number.
Sure.
If they don't have the true number.
And I think they could do that partially by looking at historically comparable earthquakes like North Ridge, and see how North Ridge affected these sorts of infrastructure.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments?
I would kind of tend to agree with looking at that. What is the true thing, being on the emergency management committee, is the kind of things you look at regionally, because it's all connected, right? And if it's just, I mean, to just buy, stockpile pipes is, you know, by itself is a little, we need a little more than that to go with it. And when those things happen, what do we really need to respond? It's going to be not just pipes.
Correct. Thank you. Those are really good comments. I'll take those back. The last, for good of the order, item that I had was I, Sheldon from Public Works Engineering has been meeting frequently throughout the 62nd Avenue project with Sammish Plateau Water to discuss a water main replacement, or a sewer replacement that the city agreed to cost share with Sammish Plateau during the construction of 62nd Avenue. So I know it's come to infrastructure occasionally for updates. All through their project, and including the preloading on their project, our Public Works Director has been collecting data with a hope to go back to Sammish Plateau Water and ask if they would reconsider the ILA, if data showed that settlement was not causing a problem for their installation, and that the pipe itself had significant amount of life left. I attended the Sammish Plateau Water District Board meeting today. I asked them if they would consider a opener, and they said yes. It's a $360,000 project, $180,000 each to Isqwa and Sammish. I'm not sure within our timeframe to stay on schedule we can actually get this done. So I talked with the Public Works Director today about a parallel track. So we will continue to plan for and begin preconstruction on the replacement of the pipe, while over the next two to four weeks, we work on whether or not they're willing to leave the installation as it is, which would be a cost savings of $360,000 to the two jurisdictions. So I'm marginally hopeful. I think it's a good idea, and I just wanted to let you know that that was sort of in play right now. Lost sight of my head. Anybody else have any other items? There will be no executive session this evening, so there being no further business, we are adjourned at 8:34.